Had you heard from everybody?
Yes. Okay, we are live.
I'm gonna text Jim, by the way, in the meantime.
Why don't you let me do that while you start the meeting?
Fine, I'll do that. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the January 28th, 2021 edition of the Plastow zoning board of adjustment. I'm Pete Bealow, the chair. Before we get going, let me read the COVID announcement. The Plastow zoning board of adjustment due to the COVID-19 coronavirus crisis and in accordance with Governor Sununu's emergency order number 12, pursuant to executive order 2020-04, this board is authorized to meet electronically, and these reasons shall be reflected in the minutes. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to the meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, we are confirming that we are A, providing public access to the meeting by telephone. Members of the public wishing to attend this meeting electronically may call the following conference call number 15622478422, access code 900-532-276. B, additional public access by video or other electronic means will be available as follows. We are utilizing the GoToWebinar platform for this electronic meeting. All members of the board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during the meeting through the GoToWebinar platform, and the public has access to contemporary easily listen and, if necessary, participate in this meeting by clicking on the following webinar address: C, providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. Legal notice was sent to all the butters for each application and was published in the Eagle Tribune newspaper with information on how to access the meeting. D, providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting that a member of the public wishes to speak or be recognized during any public comment or public hearing. The GoToWebinar platform has both a raise your hand and Q and A feature that allows attendees to alert that they have a question. Please note that all questions submitted through the Q and A feature must contain your address and will be read into the record. E, other access to the meeting. The meeting will be broadcast on Plastow Access cable channel 17 and will be livestreamed on the town website at www.plastow.com. F, in the event that the public is unable to access the meeting via conference call or GoToWebinar, the meeting will be adjourned and be rescheduled at a later time. I gotta record this next time.
I did get a response back from Mr. Flynn. He's running late. If he's able to make it at all, they've had an emergency at home. One of their animals. Just so people don't panic, it's with the dog.
Okay.
But I did not hear back from Mr. Under yet.
Okay. D, would you please call the roll?
Peter Bealow?
I am here in a room by myself with other people in the house.
Dan Lloyd?
Here remotely, no other present.
John Flynn, as I stated, may be running late if he's able to make it. Gary Ingham?
I'm here remotely and in a room by myself.
And I have not heard from Mr. Under. Oh, Jonathan Gifford is excused. My apologies.
Okay. Dan, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the stand.
One nation.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
And justice for all.
That delay is brutal. Maybe we should do it that one person says it. And then we don't have to worry about the delay.
Okay. Let's take a look at the last minutes. I find them here. There they are. Okay. Do people need time to go through the minutes?
No.
No.
Okay. D, would you, what was somebody making a motion to accept the minutes?
Make a motion to accept the minutes from last month's meeting. As printed.
Thank you. D, would you call the vote?
Peter Bealow?
Yes.
Dan Lloyd?
Yes.
Gary Ingham?
Yes.
The vote is 300 and the motion passes.
Okay. Shall we go on to our first cases? Are applicants?
I don't think so. Let me, let me just hold on one second. Are there any applicants representing Mr. Leoncio Polanco from 108 Forest Street? If so, could you hit the raise your hand feature? I'm not seeing anybody raise their hands. Perhaps we could move on to the other two and see if he might make an appearance after that.
Okay. Okay, what are you? Yeah, let's start 21-02.
Okay. Case number 21-02, a request from Federated Realty 5 LLC for a variance from Article 5, Section 220, 32i, to permit a structure to be located within 12 feet of the property line on the north side, where 35 feet is the minimum required. The property is located at 49 Plaza Road, tax map 26 lot 67 in the Commercial One District. The applicant is the property owner of record. Let me, oh. Let me just explain something. Mr. Polanco just came, so let me just explain something to him real quick. Mr. Polanco, we were waiting for you and we, you weren't here, so we are going to proceed with the other applicants first, and then we'll come back to you, so don't go away. I've unmuted the folks for it, but some of you are on self-mute. So just, you're all set if you just, if you come up, so you.
Okay.
I believe Charlie Zilch is representing this applicant.
Mr. Zilch, you there?
I am. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. D? Do we have a full complement of members tonight?
We do not.
Give your explanation.
To that. Mrs. Zilch, we unexpectedly have only three members, which means, I think, as you're aware, that all three of us would have to vote in favor of each of these variances in order to pass them. Normally, that's due to RSAs, because we have a five-person board. A majority of the full board has to vote in favor of anything. So if you choose to go forward, that's great, but you can't use the fact that we had a, we're short board members later to come back as an appeal. But you also do have an absolute right to postpone this hearing until the, until next month or next time we can get a full board. It's solely up to you.
Okay, I'm just conferring with my client right now. If you could just give me one second.
Take your time. This is on us, not you.
No, I'm texting back and forth.
Yeah.
Appreciate the moment here. So I think at this point, my client and I would like to continue to the next available hearing with a full compliment of the board.
Okay. Again, I offer, you know, my and the board's apology for not being able to provide that this evening.
No, I think that's not in your control, and I appreciate the the consideration. I really do.
It's my team, therefore it's upon me to say that.
Thank you. All right, well, ask for a continuance then?
Charlie, can I ask, this is for both matters?
Correct.
Mr. Chair, the next scheduled zoning board meeting would be on February 25th. So you can make that statement of the continuation.
Yes, so this, both these cases that Mr. Zilch is representing are continued to February 28th, and again, my apologies.
25th. Thank you.
That's right. Don't listen to what I said. Listen to what I meant. 25th.
Well, thank you for your time, and thank you for consideration. I appreciate it.
Okay. Have a good night, Charlie.
You bet.
Okay, D, let's get to the.
Yeah. Case number 21-01, a request from Leoncio, Leon, I'm sorry if I'm saying your name wrong, I really am, Polanco, for a special exception under Article 10, all sections to permit a home occupation, namely a janitorial office cleaning business. The property is located at 108 Forest Street, tax map 60 lot 45 in the LDR District. The applicant is the property owner of record.
Are you hearing us, sir?
You are on self-mute. There you go. You can go ahead, sir.
Yeah.
Mr. Polanco, you can go ahead. His microphone is green, so.
I think you need to turn your microphone on your, from your end.
He's not at his computer.
Oh.
I'm getting, I have a little thing that pops up that says when they're not there, says not attentive. He may have gone, oh, I think he's back. Mr. Polanco, are you there? Hello? Mr. Polanco?
Is it possible to give him a phone call? Because we did tell him we were gonna do another, other cases before he is.
Let me give it a shot. Hold on. Gotta find it. Hold on.
Do you have it, D? Because I have it.
I do have it. Give me just a minute.
Okay.
We're not hearing you, D.
Be with you just a minute, board, and talking to him. I put it on mute so I could talk to him.
Sure, sure.
We're gonna, we're gonna try this, folks, and see if this works. I have him on my cell phone. So we're gonna see if we can do it this way.
I did a Zoom meeting like a week and a half ago. It can, it can be made to work.
Go ahead, sir.
Okay, let's try this again. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, good evening.
Before he goes on too far, I need to explain the thing that we only have a three-member board tonight.
Right.
So, so, sir, we only have a three-member board tonight. Normally, we have five. By state law, by state RSA, we have to have three positive votes in order to pass anything. And given that there's only three of us here tonight, that means it have to be unanimous vote. You can elect to go forward and tonight with just the three of us. Or if you wish, you can postpone for, till the February 25th meeting, where hopefully we would have more members. I did expect five tonight, by the way, but two unexpectedly could make it. If you choose to go to the 25th, there's no extra costs or reapplication fees or any of that. So would you like to go forward tonight, or would you like to defer to the 25th of February?
Well, I think if I go forward and and I mean, all I would need to do is probably just do it, try the second time or something.
No, it's a, it's a kind of a one-shot deal. If you, if you elect to go forward, then we go forward, and that's it.
Okay. All right, then let's go forward.
Okay.
I do want to make sure that you understand, sir, that if all three of these gentlemen don't vote in your favor, then you, your motion would be denied. And that's it. You can't reapply at that point in time. If you choose to go to the next meeting, where you would have, could have a five-member board, the odds are better that three out of those five people would vote, could vote for you. So I just want to make sure that you understand.
So in order for me to, in order for me to get the, the okay, would be, I would need two, two votes from, from all three guys.
No, you need all three of them to vote yes. The state law requires that it be at least three yes votes, no matter how many people are there.
Okay. I think I give it a shot.
That's your call, sir.
Okay. So now that we're beyond that, I'll also let you know that I can't remember the last time we turned down a home occupation, so. But it could happen this time. So. Oh, but before we go too far, did you folks, yeah, Dan and Gary, you noticed the home occupation checklist?
Yes, I did.
Yes.
Nice little addition that D came up with on her own.
They don't have that.
I thought you had a copy, they had copies.
I told you. It's only going in your phone.
Oh. Actually, they do, they do have a copy of the checklist, but not a filled-in checklist.
Okay.
You're talking about the one you emailed, right, Pete?
Yes.
Yes, I had.
I actually have ones that's filled in for tonight. Sorry. Okay, so. Mr. Polanco, let's, let's go forward. Let's hear what you're planning on doing. And by the way, I, again, apologize, but I want to make darn well sure we have your, saying your name right. So would you please state your name for us? Okay.
And I just want to state for the record so that we have received notification from the zoning officer that this fits the requirement under C, so we do have that in the file.
I do, yeah.
Okay. So you want to start a janitorial office cleaning business? I guess it would always, Forrest. It seems to take up about 18% of the living space for your application, and that's well within our requirements of less than 25%?
Yes, let's talk about that, yeah.
Okay. Will, will you be having more than two commercial vehicles at, at the residence?
No, I don't, I don't think so. Because what we intend to do is our work model will be go to commercial buildings and do the cleaning for them. And I intend to keep all the equipment at the location, each different location.
Perfect. Okay. So the business use can't change the residential kind of character of the dwelling in the property, like from the outside. It looks like you're using part of the cellar, so I guess it wouldn't, it seems like it wouldn't change, change the residential character. Do you, do you, are you looking to have a sign in front of the house? Okay. You could, by the way, if you wished, but it shouldn't, could be illuminated. Would there be more than one person who doesn't live in the home employed at your home? Or is this all remote?
Can you please repeat that again, sir?
Sure. You're allowed to have one person who doesn't live in your house, working in your house. You know, is that, you know, is that okay for you? I would guess you have all your people remote anyhow in businesses.
Well, what we intend to do at the beginning of just be like a family business, you know, be me and my wife. But we leave together, obviously.
Okay, so is this not a problem? I didn't see any covenants on the D that would prevent this. Would you be storing any flammable or dangerous materials in the house or in any commercial vehicle?
No, sir, I don't think so.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions? Dan, Gary? None?
No, I'm all set.
Okay. Before we go to a vote, Mr. Polanco, do you have anything else you'd like to say?
You know, this is, I've called new to me. I've been a private employee for all my life, and I've always been, I came to have my own company. And I said, I'll give it a shot. Yeah, I go. I do have experience cleaning. I've been on my, I've been on my, I've been part-time. I couldn't do a lot, you said. I still haven't started working on my own company, other than for other seasons. I don't have the license. I don't have any account yet, but. Yeah, so I don't know what to say.
Okay. Okay. Is there, D, is there anybody out there speaking in favor of this?
I don't see any hands raised. And I don't see. Let me just double-check the emails here for just a second. And I don't see any emails.
Okay, so there's nobody speaking in favor. If there's no, there's no emails or anybody speaking against, I assume, if there's nobody out there?
There is somebody out there. They just don't have a hand raised.
Okay. Okay, then.
Can I, Mr., I don't know the, I can't pronounce the last name, so I'm just gonna call you Mr. Joseph. Do you have anything that you'd like to say, sir? Your microphone is on mute if you do.
I do not. I do not. I was for the other, the other. I just kind of want, you can't, you can't buy this kind of stuff, you know, on TV, so. You need to listen. So I'm not involved in this at all. If I had anything, I'd say, allow the man to make a living, so.
Thank you very much, and I'm glad we entertain you. Okay, so there being no comments, well, other than that won't comment in favor. Would somebody make a motion, please?
Excuse me, would you like to close the public hearing first?
Oh, let's close this hearing, and we're close this hearing, so we can't take any more testimony or anything. Would somebody make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move to grant the request from Leoncio Polanco for a home occupation under Article 10, all sections to allow a janitorial cleaning service at 108 Forest Street, tax map 60 lot 45.
Okay, and I'll second that. I can't give Gary all the fun. Does anybody have any comments with us about this?
Nah. I only have, I have one, and it's more of a administrative type of thing. On this motion, it says to grant his request to allow a janitorial cleaning service. Isn't what he's asking for a, a home office?
He has a home office for cleaning service.
That's what it says, a request for a home occupation.
Right, his businesses is, he has a cleaning service, where he cleans businesses.
Occupation. All right, I just didn't know if it needed to say office versus janitorial cleaning service.
No, it's good.
Okay, I'm good.
Thank you.
Um, are we ready to vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
D, please call it.
Dan Lloyd?
Yes.
Gary Ingham?
Yes.
Peter Bealow?
Absolutely, and I'd like to wish the applicant the best of luck and much success in his business.
The vote is 300. It passes unanimously.
Okay, so you can take that off. So, see, we have some other, did you have any other business? I have a couple pieces.
Yes, we have the discussion about the bylaws.
Yes, indeed. Do you, did you folks have a chance to look at the proposed bylaw changes?
Yes.
Yes.
Are we good with them?
Yes.
We have, we have to read them at two meetings to be official.
Right, we'll do that the next, next two meetings.
Okay.
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 Okay, so, so the next two, so at the next two meetings, we will have, I guess, public hearings to discuss or to go over the the proposed changes to the bylaws.
It's not officially a public hearing. Just, it just has to be read at two successive meetings.
Fine, then we will read the proposed changes at two successive meetings.
Yeah, that's all. I just want to make sure that they understand that it's not, no, there's no notice in the newspaper or anything like that. It's just part of the agenda.
Right. Okay, anything else, D?
No, sir.
Okay, so one thing I want to bring up is an email I sent out this morning to you folks that started off with, dear ZBA, or it actually started out with ZBAs comma. I sent the note below. Did you guys, you guys, have you guys all read that?
Yes.
Yes.
What are your thoughts?
I can.
Okay, Gary?
I think it is a good memo. Well-deserved.
So you're okay with me resetting it tomorrow from the ZBA as a whole?
Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
And if anybody attends. Well, yeah, nothing, that's about, and I may end up reading it on Saturday morning as well. It's deliberative. Maybe. Okay, we don't need a formal vote on that. I don't think we, yeah, I don't think we need a formal vote on that. Then the second email I sent out, I think it was yesterday, on some of the proposed changes in RSAs. Did you guys have a chance to take a look at those?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I don't have them up on my computer screen at the moment, but I can, if you need it. I guess I'm gonna propose that we, we as a ZBA, right to our state reps is support the, the RSA change that basically removes a member if they move out of the, out of the town.
Okay.
And that we voice our concern about the, about the RSA change. Yeah, what is, there really changes the whole variance process from people having to show us why they should get a variance to, to, it seems it's changing it to us having to be on that hot seat for denying a variance. be on that hot seat for denying a variance.
I wasn't real thrilled with that.
Yeah, yeah, neither was I.
Anybody see or hear me? Excuse me.
Yes, and John.
So, John, you missed the hearings. We granted, uh, we, we granted the uh home occupation and um, the other two uh were postponed until next time when we have a full board. Mr. Under isn't here either.
Oh.
Okay, so, so I appreciate you showing up. I, I hope uh everything's okay with your pack.
Um. So, so.
Uh-oh. Um, but anyhow, so we're just going on a couple of other things. Um, the board, the, the board took, voted to su- support me um, sending a, a letter to uh, uh, town manager and selectman, um, just like I did as an individual this morning, and I sent it out to you guys. Uh, I mean, to ZBA members. So we took a vote on that, and now we're, we're just, we're just discussing the uh, some of the, the proposed changes to RSAs that seem to affect us. And I guess the con, the consensus was, it's okay for me to put something together, reach out to our state reps, supporting the one that removes somebody from their position if they move out of town, and not supporting the one that really turns our process head over heels, um, having to make us, us prove, you know, why a variance isn't granted versus the applicant proving that a great, a variance is deserved.
Okay.
So I'll put something together and surely bef- before anything gets sent out, I'll at least send it out to the board for people, you know, for people's knowledge.
Good.
And that's kind of all I had. Dee, nothing else?
No.
John, maybe, maybe we'll see you Saturday. I'll be outside in a tent, though.
I, I won't be there, Andy. I'm still in quarantine. They won't, they won't let me in, and cause I can't do it remotely.
That's true. So, by the way, I will note that on Monday night, this last Monday night, uh, Danville voted to delay theirs until like July.
Really?
Yep, so how?
Well, we, we rented, uh, we're having a tent put up with heaters. I'm sure, I don't know if anybody knows about that.
Yep.
And we expect to be able to accommodate a hundred or so people.
Sounds good. Okay. Nothing else, nothing else official before I close the meeting? Okay, let's declare this meeting adjourned. Dee, would you like, if Frank, to get us off TV and all?